It's five o'clock. Chaplain? Please.
He said chaplain.
I apologize, the sheriff was talking to me. Hey, when the sheriff talks, you have to listen. Is this my call?
There we go. Now he can hear me. Let's pray. Father, I want to thank you so much for the privilege and the honor that we have to be in this room tonight and to stand here and just to give you thanks. Thank you for life. Thank you for your blessings. Thank you for wisdom. Thank you for everything that you do for us, God. And thank you for the calling that you placed upon these men and women here in this room today to serve this county. I pray, God, that you'll give them wisdom today. I pray that you'll give them a spirit of unity and a bond of peace as they go through the agenda. And Father, I also pray for our county workers and our county first responders, each and every one of them, God, continue to protect them, watch over them, bless them in all that they do, and bless their families. And we pray this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Let's stand and do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call the June 2nd, 2025 meeting of the Burley County Commission to order. First item is roll call of members.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Here.
Commissioner Munson.
Here.
Commissioner Bakken.
Here.
Commissioner Schwab.
Here.
Chairman Bittner.
Here.
Next is approval of the agenda. Commissioner Munson requested that we remove item 8A. And under me and Finance Director Jacobs, I think we have the same sort of that would be 9E under me and 7C or 7A. So I think we can scratch 8A and 9E from the agenda. Anybody else have any other changes?
Move to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Munson.
Aye.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Consideration of the May 15th and 21st special meeting minutes and May 19th, 2025 meeting minutes and bills, commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I had the opportunity to read the bills this morning and approved them. And I would recommend that we approve the minutes of the May 15th and 21st special meetings and May 19th and the bills.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Next is consent agenda. Commissioners, anybody want to pull anything off the consent agenda for further discussion? Otherwise, what are your wishes?
Move to approve the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second.
Motion is second to approve. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Item number six, Commissioner Woodcox, reconsideration of the Sanford bond.
Mr. Chairman, we had an opportunity to review a bond application at our last meeting. And we had several questions which I felt were not answered completely or not properly. And so I would like to reconsider that bond application. And I did visit with Sanford. And they have a representative here that we've dealt with before. But he would like to make a presentation and keep us up to date, open up for any questions that we might have and bring it off the table for reconsideration.
Okay, it's a new one on me as far as, is that a motion or is?
Yes. Reconsideration.
Okay.
Second.
Motion is second to reconsider the Sanford bond. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Um, I see. Okay.
Both.
You're on first. Okay. Come on up and give your name for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Todd Schaefer. I am the President and CEO of Sanford Health here in Bismarck. With me I have Brian Ritter, who is our Head of Market Affairs. He is handing out an FAQ sheet that will go into further detail in terms of the bond issue that was brought before you two weeks ago. First and foremost, I just want to start off by apologizing to the commission for not being here in person that evening, not understanding what questions that you would have had. We should have been more prepared and I should have been in attendance for that. So I do appreciate the opportunity to come back and explain what the issuance of the bonds are for, what this means, and really what this means for the county. When you look at the motion that was in front of you on that night, this is an IRS requirement. So Sanford Health is looking to issue bonds for capital projects throughout its footprint. And we're not specifically asking for bonding from the commission itself. We are going through the South Dakota Health and Education Facilities Authority because we're not able to issue bonds directly. So as part of these bonds that are being issued, they, the IRS does have a section in their code that requires us to appear, first of all, in the paper and then a first reading and then the motion that was made and then ultimately defeated two weeks ago, which is basically what you're doing is certifying that we have projects in your jurisdiction that we're using capital funds for. So there's no liability to the county. This is nothing else other than certifying that we do have those in your jurisdiction. Just as an example, you'll see that on the sheets that we handed out. Some of the projects that we've done, first and foremost, the South Ridge Clinic, which is our new walk-in clinic. We have family medicine ultrasound down in the South Ridge Center on the south part of town. Our legacy bed addition, which is the 36 beds that we're adding to our facility. First set of 12 beds go live on June 9th, which is just next Monday. And then you look at two weeks from there and then three weeks from there, the full 36 beds will be online. We've got the outpatient surgery center, which is on the corner of Main Street and 7th, which doubles our outpatient surgery capacity. The UND building, where we built out the third floor, which has allergy, immunology, and as well as ear, nose, and throat. Fourth floor, which has got our oncology and infusion services. And I could go on and on. There's a lot of projects that we've done throughout the years in this, in this community, which total over $360 million. Currently, we have what, $72 million that were projects that are in flight currently right now. Now, you look at it and go, well, it's asking for $2.1 billion. And that's not for this jurisdiction. That's all throughout Sanford. And this is bonding that we would be able to leverage up to that amount. It just gives us the opportunity to be able to bond these out and to do additional capital projects with. And again, at the end of the day, this is basically, I think, it's very important to re-stress that. It's an IRS requirement that allows us to be able to issue these bonds, to be able to continue to invest in the community that we've been investing quite a bit in. So with that, I will stand for any questions that the commission might have.
Mr. Chairman, did you give us an estimate of what was going to be spent in Burley County or Martin County? Did you give us a number there?
Chairman Bittner and Commissioner Woodcox. At this point in time, the current projects that are in flight total about 72 million.
72 million.
We do have strategic capital asks in for addition with a heart hospital, a heart tower, which is about $500 million, as well as Etna Building, which we own, we're waiting to build that out. And then other properties that we have that we're just waiting for capital funds to be able to complete those projects, which when you look at just from a Bismarck region, is in that $5 to $550 million range.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwab.
I understand what he's saying. But if there's one thing I don't like is when something is put before me one minute before we have to make a decision and it's not included in the agenda. Number two is, I don't know why we're getting involved in financing, period. I think, in my opinion, every time I see something like this and they say, well, they approved, they approved, everybody's for it. We know somebody like that. Did you want to find out if they're here?
Is there a representation from Summit Carbon Solutions here?
So I can support it.
Commissioner Bobby.
Todd, once again, this is just, again, IRS compliance bonded out of South Dakota for the benefit of Burley County residents and our community here.
That is correct. I'm sorry. Chairman Bittner, Commissioner Bakken, you're absolutely correct. If you look in the last paragraph on the backside of the page, it even lists the subsection of the IRS code. And really, you know, to answer Commissioner Schwab's statements, you know, we're not asking for, you know, permission in terms of saying that, you know, we want you to say we can bond this or that we can do these projects. This is basically acknowledging the projects that we have in flight. And had we had this information, I apologize, we should have got that to you sooner than right before the meeting. But again, this is just an IRS requirement that says that we are bonding and these are the projects that are happening in your jurisdiction. And then the idea is those capital funds will be spent back in Burley County for additional projects as we, as we're able to secure that, those bonds.
And this is no different than if you were going to a venture group or a big bank. Just that's the mechanism out of South Dakota that you're getting the funding for, for doing these capital projects. Same as if I go to my banker and get a home improvement loan.
So Chairman Bittner and Commissioner Bakken, you're absolutely right. Other than the fact that Sanford Health is not able, as a not-for-profit entity, to bond on our own. So that's why we are partnering with that agency, the bond agency that we have.
It's just the mechanism you're using.
It's a mechanism for us to be able to do that. And by issuance of these bonds, it allows us to be able to achieve these capital projects without having to, you know, basically take, you know, other things, other investments that we would otherwise make and use those for capital projects.
Commissioners, any additional questions? I don't see. Move to approve.
Second.
About public input, which is required.
Well, I have a motion and a second. Does anybody wish to speak on this item? Thank you.
Charles Tull. I live on the roster. I think the reconsider, we have to go through the same process. They have, the IRS requires that they have public notice in the paper and that you have public notified and they can speak on it. I'm still curious as to why this has been, why we've been pressured to reconsider this? Who pressured the commissioners to reconsider it? And my question to the commissioners are, didn't they know what they were voting on? And we've had, for how many months we've had this, we have an auditor that doesn't know what he's doing. And now all of a sudden, I'm seeing commissioners that don't seem to know what they're doing. And you either voted, what was the reason you voted? The way you voted. And now we should have, the public should have an explanation why you're changing your votes, why this is going to be rubber stamped through. And I still want to know from Sanford, I'm going to ask them right here. Why did you oppose Measure 4? It was an initiative by the people for tax breaks when you people don't pay taxes.
We're here talking about a bond issue.
Right.
And I'm not going to, I'm not going to ask you to go off topic like that.
Well, that's not off topic. They don't pay taxes. Now they're wanting us to give them a tax break when they're lobbying against us to have tax breaks. That's very.
Your point is well taken.
Okay. And that's my problem. And they need to answer for that because that's a definite hit.
Commissioner Woodcox.
I think I brought this up again because we, at the time, we voted on this two weeks ago.
Oh, there, I got my mic on. When we voted on this two weeks ago, we did have several questions that were not answered in full. We didn't know how much was going to be spent in Burley County. We, I was under the assumption since it was South Dakota related, it was all going to be in South Dakota. And I didn't approve that. I didn't like that.
We knew that.
Well, you knew that, that you were just asking. You were just asking why we voted it down. That's why we voted, not the only reason, but that's one. And when we got information, further information that we should have had and he was right in that they should have been here to present this, then reconsidered and I brought it up to the, to the group. And we are, we're aware of what's going on and that's why I brought it up to reconsider it.
I don't think you guys are aware of what's going on. Where are the bonds coming from? Who's the bond holder? Nobody knows this stuff. Okay? I've been researching it. But we were told when you guys approved or you guys denied this, you were told that the bonds were coming out of South Dakota and it was going to be renovation and stuff for both. The reason they came here is because it's going to be here. It's going to be invested in here. We knew that. So when you say you didn't know that, I'm wondering why you didn't know that.
We did not, I don't want to argue with you, but we did not know where it was going to be spent. In fact, I asked the question, how much was going to be spent in Burley County? And the person who was representing Sanford didn't have the accurate question. She didn't give us an adequate answer and that's why we voted no.
Okay. Well, I'm just telling you, under the IRS requirements that I've read, you're actually starting all over. You can't reconsider. You need to have a notice in the paper, have public input, and redo it all over if that's what you want to do. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else wish to speak on this? Okay, it's not a public hearing, so don't need to close that. We have a motion and a second to approve. For my, for my purposes, I did want more information at the time, like you said. And I felt it was appropriate that a local person was here. And I appreciate that effort and I certainly appreciate the apologies that he gave for not being here. And I consider that to have met my, my concerns. So any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
No.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Finance Director Jacobs, we got three things, funding options for Provident Building renovation, BND Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund, and reimbursement resolution. Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bittner and Commissioners. You know, upon rereading the agenda, I probably really have one thing. It's kind of all, kind of mixed together.
It's okay.
But we'll, I think we'll, we'll deal with it in turn here. So I had a request from a commissioner to present some funding options for the Provident Building. That's not to say that we didn't know how it was going to be funded. We have adequate funds on hand to, for the project. We have, you know, $6 million in ARPA funding for one example. But there are options. And certainly with, you know, when we started talking about this, that was before the, you know, before the legislative session and the passage of the HB 1176, which caps property taxes, is going to impact this, the remodel. So that's, that's something that, it's just unavoidable that I just think we have to, we have to talk about that. So in your packet, there's a half a dozen or so different funding options for the Provident Building. Not to overcomplicate it, they're, really the options are presenting some variation of cash and debt. Because that's really the options we have. We can use cash on hand or we can use debt. And so the options presented, it looks like a lot, but it's really just, it's really just two things. It's like a recipe in different amounts. So on the one hand, we have the option to use 100% cash. And this would most likely come from $6 million of ARPA funding and 10.5 million of reserves. The ARPA cash is no longer restricted by the grant. It's not subject to any further reporting or obligation. So it's, we're not stuck with that 2026 date that the ARPA grant carries. Under the ARPA grant, you have to actually spend the money by 2026. We've totally complied with what we need to do with this, this $6 million bucks. So that deadline does not exist for us. Currently, that money is in the county's Capital Improvement Fund per commission action at a special meeting on December 23rd, 2024. So on the, so that's cash. On the other end of the spectrum is debt. And so if we fund with debt, that would ideally come in the form of $5 million from the BND Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund and 11.5 million from the issuance of bonds. Now, that's contingent on the county qualifying for the loan with BND. The reason I say ideally is because the BND Infrastructure Revolving Loan Fund is 2% interest rate. So that's quite a bit lower than we would get in the market issuing bonds. But it is capped at 5 million. So that's, that's the reason for the 5 million. So just on that topic, since I'm kind of collapsing all these items into one, there's a, there's an, a application window open right now. It closes June 20th. And so the reason I originally put this on the agenda was to ask the commission for, I think a consensus would be sufficient for the Finance Department to go ahead and apply for this loan through BND before the deadline. Obviously, you know, if it's offered, we would need to come back to the commission, you know, to accept it. Because at that point, we'd be obligating the county.
Okay, I'm going to have you hang on right there, Lee. We should discuss that right now because I think that's one of the best options that we have at this point. Because if we qualify for the loan, and I don't see why we wouldn't, capturing that 2% interest is, you know, is just the smartest thing to do. Especially since we're, we're getting a return on investment of higher interest than that already. So Commissioner Schwab.
Lee, if, if, I agree with what Chair Bittner said. But my question is, with these bonds and stuff, CDs, I know you can, if the interest rate that we would be getting, say, drops to 1%, are we able to go a different route and pay the thing off?
I think we could, we would talk to our, to our bond guys. But I, I think you normally have a, sort of like an early repayment date or whatever. It's a certain point in the future so that, you know, the bond purchasers have some.
Protect the county.
Yeah. And so I, so I think we could work that into the deal. In fact, the, the 2020 bonds that we refinanced had a 2025 early, you know, repayment date. So it's definitely a thing. And I think they would normally want to have a couple of years between issuance and the early repayment just so the people purchasing the bonds get some return, would be my, my guess. But yeah, I think we should do that, exactly as you described.
So I don't know if the commission wants that in the form of a motion or just a consensus. But I do think we should, at the very least, direct at the Finance Department, start the application process for that revolving loan fund through Bank of North Dakota.
I'm going to make that a motion. I think we should vote on that.
Second.
Okay. A motion is second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Woodcox.
Mr. Chairman, you're looking at option two then primarily, is that correct?
I'm just kind of separating.
I know we're doing the $5 million application to Bank of North Dakota. I agree with that. But because down at the bottom it says Bank of North Dakota Loan and then Bonds of 11.5, we're not considering that.
I don't think so, no.
No. We're considering using reserves, Bank of North Dakota and ARPA.
Yes, that's kind of where I'm at.
Commissioner Munson.
Mr. Chair, with this motion to apply for the loan.
Right.
Personally, I would say we would then table the discussion or the decision on exactly what package we would want to do until we hear back on the loan. We don't need to decide today how we're going to finance it. We might as well make sure we know what we're getting if we're getting the loan.
Yeah, because there's a deadline, yeah.
Yes.
Since there's a deadline on that application, period.
Yep.
I think we should direct that he moves forward.
I would agree.
Commissioner Bakken.
Lee, any timeline or indication of once that window closes for applications, how long before we find out? I don't recall, they sent out an email notifying, you know, counties and political subdivisions about it. I don't recall how soon after the close of the deadline we would hear. I don't recall. Probably dependent on number of applications. They grade them. There's a point system.
Yeah. And I think there's a, there's a prioritization thing too, I'm sure, you know.
So from the perspective of tabling the remainder of this, probably until we hear from Lee on, on statutory application, I would be supportive of.
Well, we'll, we'll talk about that in a second. I think that's just fine. But we have a motion and a second on directing that the Finance Department pursues the application for the Bank of North Dakota. Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries. Okay, now we can have a conversation about. Lee, are you, are you okay with waiting on, on kind of making a decision on this?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I don't think.
So my only question is, do we need to kind of start the ball rolling with the bond process if we decide to go that way? Is there some, something more we can?
Well, yes. That's actually, I'm glad you mentioned that because that is item 7C. Now, if you're referring to issuing tax-exempt bonds, am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
Then we would need to do a reimbursement resolution. And that is another IRS, talking about IRS stuff tonight, another IRS rule that, I don't think I need to read it here. Actually, it's a Treasury regulation, I guess. But basically, it, I'll just read it. It restricts the use, this regulation restricts the use of tax-exempt bond proceeds to reimburse the county for project expenditures made by the county prior to the date of issuance of such bonds. The regulations generally request that the county declare its official intent to reimburse itself for prior expenditures from the proceeds of a subsequent issue of tax-exempt bonds, but no later than 60 days after. I'll just, you know. It's exactly what we do with the specials. So we do this every time we have specials. We come in and we declare that we're going to reimburse ourselves with tax-exempt bonds for the work that we're about to do or just did. I think you have like 18 months. But that's something that we would, so the reason that I put it on the, on the list here is that is something that was recommended by Colliers, that we start that process, our bond guys. And then they recommend that we would work with our, our bond counsel, Scott Wagner, in drafting that. He does all of these for us. So I guess maybe that's another consensus or motion that we would.
I would want to see that in a motion, I believe, because it seems to me that it's a long process. And it should start whether we're going to take a specific amount or, or whatever, at least keep that avenue open at the earliest opportunity. Because we always have the option of just saying no. We don't want to do it, right?
I think so. Yeah.
Commissioners, what are your thoughts on that?
I would move to start the process. Pending verification, there's not a penalty for starting the process and then saying, no, we don't want to go through this. Because you're, I believe so. I got a question for that. So as long as there's not a penalty involved, then I would say, make a motion to start the process.
Second.
A motion is second. Like you said, I'm in agreement with that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, call the rule.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Commissioner Woodcox.
No.
Commissioner Munson.
Yes.
Commissioner Bakken.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes. Motion carries.
So, so we're talking about debt here. And, you know, our options for, for debt are basically BND and then issuing bonds. Now, when we're talking about this, what, we need to consider the implications of HB 1176, which, as I said, caps property taxes at 3%. So the bill restricts the increase in, quote, "property taxes levied in dollars" to 3% of a somewhat complicated calculation. But it's essentially 3% of the highest previous three years. So you pick your max year out of the last three. So you pick your max year out of the last three years. And that is, you can do 3% of that. There's a couple of other things in there, but that's basically the gist of it. So as we're moving on to a new funding formula with sales taxes, our property taxes levied in dollars will be relatively low. So we're gonna be restricted to 3% of a relatively low number. So then, on the other hand, we have sales tax collections. Historically, sales taxes have increased by 2%. This is since 2015, when we started the half cent sales tax. So that's Burley County sales taxes. However, there are years where sales tax collections decline. And in the current year, we're forecasting a, a 5% decline in sales tax collections. You know, the trend, as I said, is, is up 2%, but it goes down, it goes up. So the result of this, of this bill and then the volatility in sales taxes is that we do not have a reliable source of revenue for budgeting or for building reserves. And so given this three-year look back, uh, this specific issue won't hit the county until fiscal year 2029. So we have a few years. And then there is another, it's, it's sort of a, I guess, a, a wild card, if you want to call it that. If your levy is at zero, and so I'll use the example of, of some of the oil-producing counties, their, their levy's at zero in some cases because they get oil money. And so if your levy is at zero, then you may increase it anywhere from zero to the max. So if, for example, the county's general fund levy is at zero because of sales taxes, then you would have that option, uh, one year to go from zero up to, you know, something. Certainly not the max, but, but something. So that might give us another year if we're at zero in 2029 in the general fund, we might have another year. But basically, it's, it's three years. And so I, I did consider some of the pros and cons of debt, cash versus debt financing in light of, uh, this, this bill. You know, certainly there's, there's benefits to, to both. As far as cash, some of the pros that I could think of were certainly avoidance of debt. The interest rate on the debt is, is likely gonna be higher than our investment returns. And so, um, using cash to avoid debt is, if you're measuring strictly in return on investment, that's probably a better move. And it, it does not, by, by using cash, we are not increasing the tax burden on the citizens. So that's, that's certainly a good thing. I mean, we've, you know, with, with passage of sales tax and, and whatnot, we've made an effort to do that. Cons are, you know, lost opportunity, um, for other uses of the cash. The reserves are kind of our budget stabilization fund. I mean, it's not official, but that's, that's kind of how they're used. They're also sort of our emergency fund, unofficially. And, and then reserves will be harder to grow, I think, in the future with this, with this bill, the way that it's written. So if we use them now, maybe a challenge to build them up. We might have some budgeting volatility under HB 1176, so that budget stabilization, you know, fund of our reserve, that is our reserves, um, would be helpful while we sort of navigate this new landscape. Another con, and this is kind of maybe a little esoteric, but, but if you're, if you pay the cost of construction out of existing funds, that's basically burdening past taxpayers with the full cost of the project that's gonna have a future benefit, if, if that makes sense. Versus if you bond it out, then it's future taxpayers that are paying, uh, for a project that has future benefit because the, you know, the county's operating out of there. So certainly there's a benefit to the citizens, uh, for that building. And I did, I did mention, I have another con here which relates to sales tax. I did mention that, you know, we've got this volatility and, uh, you know, going forward in the future, we may have a year where we have to cut because sales taxes go down. It's just the reality of it. And so if we have to cut in a year and we've used a bunch of reserves now, that could be challenging. And so as far as the use of debt, you know, pro is the, of course, the BND, it's the low cost of debt at 2%. That would assume, of course, that we are, are approved. And as I just mentioned, you know, conversely, um, bonding spreads the cost of construction over future years. So that's a pro on the debt side, a con on the cash side. And then similarly with these issues with sales tax and HB 1176, it's a con on the cash side, it's a pro on the debt side, if you follow me. Because the debt, bonded debt is not subject to the limitation under HB 1176. And so we can, we can bond and, and levy it, and that's allowable, so we're not gonna have that, that issue. Of course, the con of using debt is it increases the tax burden when we have cash on hands, on hand to pay for the project. And then another con is that the interest rate on debt issued by the county is higher than the investment returns. So it's, you know, pro on the cash side, con on the debt side. So they're really kind of opposite, um, opposites here. So I, I didn't want to get into this bill honestly right now because we just started looking at it about a week or two ago and we had a lot of conversations, well, two, but they were long, with the association of counties about it, um, about the implications of this bill and especially with our unique situation with sales taxes. And so it's just so, and I understand it's, there's, my, what, what I was told is that there's like 16 different versions of it. I, I don't know if that's true or not, but, uh, but everybody's struggling with trying to understand the bill as it's written, let alone you add our sales tax issue into it, and it's just super complicated. But I felt that we needed to start talking about it because of, um, the implications that, uh, that it has on the Provident Building, on, on the funding of it. So that's what I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Commissioners, any questions? I, I think it's a good idea to keep this subject on the agenda for the next meeting. And I also think it's a good idea for Commissioners to continue asking questions and trying to, you know, get answers as we can. I personally am gonna talk to some legislators and see if I can get some insight on what the possible, uh, you know, future actions could be because although I did talk to legislators ahead of time, um, it didn't, I don't, I don't think it, it was sufficient, you know, or, or in, in enough time, you know? So I'll be doing that and hopefully other Commissioners will too. So I think we'll keep this on the agenda. And I want to thank you, Lee, for putting together a really good, uh, presentation on that. Thank you. Okay, under 8B, um, I have, uh, Mary Singer provided, provided a, a Burley County, a proposed Burley County change order item, and this would be under you. Um, I don't know if you've seen it.
Nope.
Okay, one of the, if you want to look, um, one of the big concerns, uh, first off, with the Provident Building project, there's a, a kind of a, an amount built in for, um, possible changes and contingency and whatnot. But, um, the question really should be, what would an authorized amount for a change order be without having to come back to the commission for full approval? Well, that's the question.
What have we, what have we allowed for contingencies, any idea, total?
I don't, I don't remember.
Okay.
Been too much water under that bridge.
Well, Mr. Chair, that's, that was exactly my concern. You know, the, the commission approved the, the construction amount of $16 million 587. I'm personally in a project where change orders are coming at me every day. So you are going to be in that hot seat where change orders are coming at you. And so rather than everything coming in front of this board every time, what is our procedure? What is the limits? How do we move forward without having a special meeting every other week to discuss something as opposed, you know, as well as at this meeting? And so I just wanted it out front. I wanted everybody to visit about it. Do we need to make a decision today? No, but I think we need to have a consensus or a motion to give you the authority that you need so that we're not discussing it at every meeting.
Okay, well, what I think we should do, um, is because this, this is the first time I've seen it in actual form, uh, printed form. So I think what I'd like to do is put that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Yes.
And we'll have time to think about it and, um, we'll, we'll use this as, um, part of the agenda packet so I can read it. Commissioner Woodcox.
Um, Mr. Chairman, um, I happen to be the construction manager when we remodeled the courthouse, and I think that was like a six to seven million dollar total cost. And, and I was authorized to spend up to $25,000 on that project without coming back to the board, anything more than that. We had to do that, had to come back. And that was easy because, uh, they, there might be some lights that they need to change and that type, but there were the historic implications over there too that we had, had to address and, uh, that worked fine.
Commissioner Bachen.
Commissioner Woodcox, was that, uh, per piece of the project or total?
No, we had like a, I think, $400,000 contingency on it.
Contingency, okay, that, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. So it was, but a project for a change order up to $25,000.
And so we had one major one that was like $150,000 or something, uh, and we came back to the board and approved that. There was a couple of old light fixtures we wanted to save and there were $10,000 or something to do that. It was, it was easy, but we had a, we had a contractor in, in, at risk in that project, which we don't have here. So the contractor did a lot of that.
How long ago was that?
Julie, how long was that? Eight, nine years?
Right, and things. It kind of been now.
No, it wasn't that long because it was eight years on the bond. So it had to be more like six or seven.
That sounds about right.
Were you, did you find yourself bumping up to that, uh, that number at all or?
No.
Other than just that one?
One, I think it was one big one that we, we moved some walls and things in, in her area, I think that was the most substantial, because we had to move an elevator and things like that.
Okay, well, the only reason I, I mentioned moving it to the next thing is just because this was the first I saw, but, but.
Well, but I think also knowing what our contingency dollars are, you know, would be good for all of us to know as well as have a good chance to look at this document.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
I think we, we had a $400,000, which sounds a lot, but that building was built on, what, 18 different levels? And we were very concerned about going up and down, up and down, all over the place. We did have some run-ins there, but I think that, and it's a historic building, which we don't have, well, the Provident Building is historic too, so we have to be careful there, so.
Okay, so we'll move that to the agenda for the next meeting and, uh, uh, I'll hand that off to the, to the auditor's office for the agenda packet. Okay, nine, determine public hearing dates for resolution and plan for separating elective office of Burley County Auditor, Treasurer to elective office of Auditor and appointive office of Treasurer. Commissioners, I don't have any recommendations on that. Do you have any thoughts on that? I guess about all I would say is probably schedule that for the next, uh, regular Burley County Commission meeting.
We're going to do that during a meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So that would be my thought. Any other?
Fine, I mean, two, I move, we have, we have public hearings in connection with the next two regular meetings.
Can I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Yeah, a motion of second. And the motion was for, uh, public hearings at the next two.
Regular meetings.
Regular meetings. Any further discussion? Call the rule.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Yes.
Commissioner Monson.
No.
Commissioner Bachen.
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab.
Yes.
Chairman Bittner.
Yes, motion carries. Update on petition to the North Dakota Governor for removal of the Burley County Auditor. I only have a very little bit of update myself, maybe the state's attorney does. Um, I saw that, that was submitted to the Attorney General's Office on Tuesday after the Memorial Day holiday and, um, um, the, I, I did get an email that had the link to what all was submitted. I don't know if that's been provided to Commissioners or not, but, um, uh, it's under one of the state's attorney lawyers, um, she's got her non-disclosure thing on there. So I didn't want to forward it to anybody with that link. I think that was being also put on the website under, uh, Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's under, um, uh, Home Rule Charter on the website, under government, under, uh, Government, Home Rule Charter, and then that information should be there. Would that be right? Shaking her head, yes.
Yes, I think if you go to the Burley County website, there's a banner at the very top that talks about that. If you click on that banner, there's a whole bunch of documents and that petition is part of that on that website. So it's that link from the front page.
Perfect, that's even better. That's easier to get to than what I was describing. And the reason I was mentioning that is because I was kind of looking for that information myself because a citizen asked me where it was because they couldn't find it. And so we wanted to make that a little more prominent. So that information is available to the public right on the Burley County website. Thank you, State's Attorney. Burley County Commission Public Comment Policy, page 214 and 215. Commissioners, any comments on that?
Mr. Chair, is, is it your thought to have it at the beginning of each meeting?
I, I didn't have a thought on it.
Okay.
I don't. Matter of fact, I didn't take time to even read it yet. Sorry. Must be pertinent to Burley County, may not interfere with the orderly conduct of the regular meeting, may not be defamatory, abusive, harassing, or unlawful, may be prohibited if an alternative procedure exists to bring that particular type of public comment before the entity. Public comment includes confidential or exempt information, or the public comment is otherwise prohibited by law. And there is a question here about time limit per speaker or session. Okay, now it does say, um, I kind of skipped over one part. Burley County welcomes public comment at our regularly scheduled meetings. Don't say that here, but I think we always have for the most part. A public comment period will be provided before the consent agenda and regular agenda to discuss items not listed on the agenda. That's kind of important to me because I think public comment for an agenda item should be in that agenda item, because otherwise, kind of no real point for it. And it also says, "Public comment is available during each agenda items." That's not necessarily, uh, the case. You know, we don't always allow public comment during each agenda item.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Monson.
If I can, I, I like the fact that we would have it at the beginning of the meeting. It allows all residents to address their concerns, whether it is an agenda item or not. But I think when we allow it during the meeting at the agenda item, sometimes we do and sometimes we don't. So what, to me, that's unfair. We either allow it on all or we don't allow it. But if we give them the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting, then we can, can conduct our meeting orderly, if we just allow them to do it at the beginning. Would be my opinion.
So you think, strike that last sentence?
Yep.
And then?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Woodcox.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Uh, on time limit, I think, uh, uh, five minutes is sufficient for one person to speak. I think we've got to put a limit on it or we can get out of whack, so to speak. Uh, I think the city has the same thing, am I correct? Five minutes?
Well, I just penciled in five minutes right there.
Kind of caveat I used with that was redundancy, and it depends on what the topic is and if, because I, I'm not a fan of time limits, if somebody shows up and one- cause I, I am not a fan of time limits. If somebody shows up and wants to speak and they're adding something to the conversation, feel free. Uh, that's what we're here for. The caveat I always had with that was as long as it's not redundant and you're adding something to the conversation. So if that takes fifteen minutes sometimes, so be it, but that was my rule. But that's, I, I think we can leave that to the chairman's discretion.
I don't think you ever, you ever, I don't think you ever cut anybody off at five minutes from all of one.
I never did and I fought with our attorney a lot over that.
Not that we would have to do that or could do that.
But I, I, I think that's something that could be left to the chairman's discretion.
Time limit, for sure.
Yeah, because that, that was my, personally, that was my, as long as it's not getting redundant and you're getting a whole bunch of people coming up saying the same thing and just grandstanding, that does eat up valuable time when you have something to add to a conversation and maybe it can't be conveyed in five minutes and, and you know what? Let's sit here and listen to it. So as long as it's something new to the conversation. But again, I, I, I would be very comfortable leaving that to the chairman's discretion.
Well, I think since we're setting, basically setting a policy, we should have something in here that refers to that, like you laid it out. I wonder if you'd, um, kind of work with Mary a little bit on the language to, to add that. Cause that seems like something that we probably should add. But I don't believe that public comment needs to be available during each agenda items. Cause sometimes we're, we have meetings where that's just not.
No, and unless it's a public hearing, then yeah, at the beginning, works best.
And Chair, if I may, the policy, yes, the policy as it's written says a public comment period will be provided before the consent agenda and regular agenda to discuss items not listed on the agenda. So take that not listed on the agenda part out as well. If you're not allowing, if you're going to take out public comment as each item is available, they should be allowed to talk about agenda items at the beginning then. So I would suggest taking out the, um, not listed on the agenda portion of that sentence as well.
Thank you. Well, that makes sense too.
Yep.
Uh, Mary?
Chair.
Public comment.
Yeah.
I think public comment, if public comment is.
This is one of those times where you do get a chance. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Jan Wangler. Um, I just have a, a comment. Being able to comment on something that you are dealing with at the time rather than before that item takes place gives the public a chance to actually respond. If there's an item listed and we're not sure exactly what all it entails and there's a discovery by what you disclose or discuss that brings up an issue for the public, shouldn't we be able to ask questions or respond to that? It's just a thought.
Yeah, well, I can answer that for you. If that were the case, I know I would allow it. If there was, you know, um, you know, new information.
Doing now, just by letting me step forward with a concern.
Yeah.
But if you say that all of the comments have to take place before the consent agenda.
We could add a line too that just says, uh, at the discretion.
At the discretion of the chair.
At the discretion of the chair, because I've, I have not seen any chairman, um, that I'm aware of over the years to, um,
There are lots of committees and lots of these meetings that we attend where there is a set time for public comment and that's all you get. So that's why I'm, I'm asking if you're intending to do something similar by removing that.
I, I think, I think we'll just add a line, you know?
Thank you.
Appreciate you bringing it up.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, because there's, there are occasions when a topic comes up and, and the reason having it put at the front of the meeting so it, one is in orderly fashion and we're not jumping around a little bit or you can get two in the weeds with things through conservation of some time. But there are an opportunity for us that the public might trigger a question that we want to ask as well. So the ability to bring somebody back, um, leaving that with the discretion of the chair, that's, that's why that's important. So, cause if somebody brings up something that raises a question for me or another commissioner, then they should be able to go review that and, and ask that question of that, the public, so.
Okay, well, um, Mary? Okay, so we're going to make some changes.
Mr. Chairman, my only, again, my only concern there is if we allow some, we have to allow all. So I don't want us to be pigeonholed one way or the other, you know? At the discretion of the chair makes sense, but I know we've told some people they can't talk. And that concerns me if we've allowed some and we're saying no to somebody else. As long as we're aware of that concern, I don't want us to be in the middle of a lawsuit because we didn't let somebody speak. If you have it at the beginning, then everybody's covered. I appreciate what she said, you know, but we got to be careful when we tell someone no.
How would we address that?
Well, so, I just wanted to bring it up as a point of conversation, but I don't know.
So that's why the public comment at the beginning and then the ability, if it raises some other issues when we get to that agenda item, for us to call them back. You don't add.
You're not adding.
You're not adding.
Okay.
You're just reviewing something that somebody already spoke to. Cause that addresses that situation.
I like that.
Discretion of the chairman has a lot to do with it.
Yeah, it does. It just means the chairman is, is paying better attention to the meeting. Which I think we've all, in our terms of done, so.
Yep.
Okay, um, it's a good conversation. So we'll, we'll look for some changes and we'll have that on the agenda for the next meeting with you. Missouri Valley Complex Purchase Inquiry Update. Okay, this was a carryover from, um, previous meeting. Is there any additional information on that?
Uh, I reached out to the individual who presented the question, uh, right after the last meeting. Uh, he said that he would try to compile some things together. Um, then I reached out to him prior to this meeting as well and he said that they don't have anything yet. He says he's working on it still, but nothing at this time.
Okay, so we'll give them a chance. Uh, we'll just move that forward to the next, uh, regular meeting agenda and we'll give them a chance to update us if, if they desire.
If, if they don't have anything to present, don't put it on the agenda?
That would be a fair, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So, cut that part. Okay. Well, it gets us to the end of the regular agenda. Any other business for the good of Burley County? Okay.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Mr.
Who's on first?
Where have been problems down there in that bridge with these barricades being moved? Marcus, you want to come up and help me out here on this? And we're thinking to take these concrete dividers down there and block it off.
The commissioners, the only thing I wanted to add is, uh, he's correct. Uh, those are the typical barriers that we use on a lot of projects. And, and a lot of times in the case of a bridge project, the bridge is out, so it's, it's finale, finality. You know, you can't go beyond there because the bridge is out. But in this particular case, we have a bridge that doesn't really meet our standards and we're concerned about the safety of the public. People are just moving the barricade. So the suggestion we had was.
Blow the bridge.
Yeah, there was a thought there, but, but then we're concerned about people going through the sign, not seeing the bridges out without contractor or having equipment around and stuff like that. What we're thinking about doing is putting, uh, concrete jersey barriers across it, a little more something substantial to keep residents out of that. And we just wanted to let the board know that that's our intent on that location, so. And answer any questions you may have.
Yeah, I, right away have a question. How are you going to, um, address that when the contractor arrives? So that, because I don't know that he's got the.
Yeah, that's a great question. That's something we'll coordinate with him, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wood?
A question, a quick question. We had, several years ago, we put a, a walking bicycle trail along Pioneer Park all the way up by Devil Ditch and up to, I forget where. Who's in charge of, did we accept the maintenance on that? Do you remember? I remember getting the contract from one of our senators and they, they would put it in with federal money, but I thought we put subject to our maintenance.
Commissioners, I'm going to have to do some investigation on that. The only way we would have accepted it, that maintenance is, would have been kicking and screaming. But we may have done it, but I don't think, I think that was the Lewis and Clark Trail.
Yeah, Lewis and Clark Trail. The city may have had some input on that, I believe.
Well, there's an area up there where the Burley County Water Resource has a Bird Creek flood control system. And around to the side, to the south, uh, there's an area where they're going along the bike path, which is not vehicle, no vehicles at all, crossing over there and going down and, uh, having drinking parties or whatever right near the water resource district project. And I didn't know who was responsible. We're, I'm looking at trying to put a gate across that, that, uh, bike path so that vehicles can't go across. It's just bicycles and it says non, non-motorized vehicles, so whatever that might be.
Commissioners, let me do some investigation on that and, and we'll talk a little bit more in detail about that location, so.
Okay.
Thanks. Mr. Schwab, you have some?
I was, you said they're drinking down there?
Amongst other things. I've heard other.
You mean Wayne's going to have to change his route?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not making any more comments.
Anything else for the good of Burley County?
Yeah.
Commissioner Buck?
Um, so, once again, anybody from Summit Carbon Solutions here? No? Okay. As per a previous conversation at the city, um, their last commission meeting, ETA discussion came up. Uh, we have our Bismarck-Burley County joint meeting this week and that's something I would like to discuss. One of the things I would like to broach with that, because there's some misinformation taking place, um, on some commissioners. I don't think the full expanse of the Bismarck City Commission understands the full situation with ETA. One of the things I would like to have a discussion about is possibly some public input meetings. And I would like to do that in the form of that venue, but I don't think anything's going to get solved unless we're all part of that. So I would like to broach that the full Burley County Commission and the full Bismarck City Commission are part of those public input meetings. So that's what I'd like to bring up at that meeting and I just wanted consensus that, uh, we would make time to make sure that that took place.
I would agree with that. I, I think I heard a comment that, um, something about the county commission didn't want to change something or something.
I did too, and that was, uh.
I was really shocked by that.
Yeah, well, and, and you know best that this goes back to myself and another commissioner on the city side when I was mayor. And you and another commissioner.
And Commissioner Woodcox.
Commissioner Woodcox, Commissioner, um, Peluso at the time, uh, we had those discussions. And, um, there's a lot there, but it's worth having a discussion. And I, if we're not all sitting at the table at the same time, I don't think there's a potential for a positive outcome. I've had some long conversations with the city administrator and we think we're getting in a direction that we might be able to bring some things to the table that could at least alleviate some of the issues, if not start getting in the right direction for fixing some problems with it. So, um, I just wanted input from the rest of the commission to get rid of the misinformation, all the information that's not there. I, I, it was my understanding, one city commissioner said that either party could opt out of that agreement, which isn't the case. Um, so we need to kind of clear the air for that as well, so.
You know, I, I, um, I would have no problem with us requesting a, a joint meeting of the city and county commissions, for that purpose, prior to a public input meeting.
Right, okay.
You know, maybe a, you know, maybe possibly a special meeting at some, at some point, hopefully in an evening or something rather than during the day. Commissioner Woodcox?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like at that time to review how we, how we establish the exterior boundary because it's like this all over around the county, depends upon the three mile limit. But how do we change that and when do we change that? Because like the big development we got going up northwest, are they going to exit into the city right away and then they get all the, the benefits of, we do all the work and get all the laid out and then they take over? That doesn't make sense to me, so I'd like to look at that, how we, uh, attack the edge of the ETA.
Well, and that was one of the things too, when I was mayor is, I hate the map of city of Bismarck. I mean, it's the most gerrymandered thing and it's confusing to citizens. And, and, um, we ran into an election issue where a bunch of people who were recently brought in the city in the northeast got the wrong ballots. Just one of the many issues when it comes to the ETA. And when somebody disenfranchises a voter, I think that's a big deal.
So I, I don't think a motion is required.
No, just consensus that everybody's available?
Yeah, available, yeah.
Okay.
Available and I think that, I think that would be important because see, I, I can tell you that there's nobody on the city commission at this point that knows the backstory.
No.
And we've been, I know Commissioner Woodcox and I have been here a long time and you, you were involved in it substantially. And I'll forward you some, uh, texts where I took pictures of, uh, the paperwork that you and I were familiar with. And there, there's some, uh, stuff that was provided by the highway department. Marcus went through old records. There's over three pages of individual projects that Burley County has had to pay for in the extraterritorial area because of actions with the subdivision approvals. And I'm not, if I'm not mistaken, we're talking in the millions of dollars worth of projects. And, and they provided a real comprehensive list. So I did provide that to Commissioner Connolly and I asked him to get that to the city commissioners. But like I said, none of those commissioners are even aware that those things have happened in the past. Those are the kind of things that we certainly need to be looking at.
And I think it starts with, like you said, a, a meeting between us before the public comment where here's the full backstory. And here's the history of, these are the issues that we're running into and then let's start trying to figure out how to solve them.
Sure. And then another example of an issue, as long as we're on that subject, is somebody that lives out in the ETA wants to get a building permit to add on to their garage, let's say. Well, they have to go to the city to get a, a, a building permit and pay money, but then, you know, it's like the Boston Tea Party, if that's making sense, you know?
Taxation without representation.
Yeah, so it's a form of that. And that, that's one of the issues certainly, that I, I mentioned that to a couple of commissioners in the past.
Difference in cause, difference, yeah, there's, there's a lot.
There's, bless. And so if, if even something as simple as a citizen in the ETA can just simply choose who they want to get a permit from. And because actually I think the city permit in some cases may be cheaper than the county permit.
Yes, it is.
So it's, it's not necessarily that it's a, you know, a financial benefit so much as the, the citizen's right to choose who, who are they, um, dealing with.
Well, and I think one of the big places that needs to be cleaned up as well, a great example is the county and the city have worked very hard to make sure that their zoning is in pretty much lockstep because that's for the future growth of our community. Where there's a failing is the building codes. And between what you're doing in the city, the ETA versus out. So if somebody wants to put up a pole barn and not pour concrete right away for cold storage, can't do that in the ETA. You can do that in the county. ET is not in the county, or in the city, it's in the county. So things like that and a lot of the building codes, I think is a lot of the places where we can look at and benefit the citizens.
I don't, I don't know that that particular thing is a building code issue. I think maybe more of a policy or an ordinance issue.
City policy that, for somebody who lives in the county, so, we have a lot to discuss.
Yeah, we would, we would be enforcing state building code as well, you know? So anyway, there's a lot of things to discuss and I think we should move ahead with, um, doing an invitation for them to meet. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwab?
One more point to bring up. I believe it's down in Kansas. People went out to get manure for their gardens. And they couldn't get any because it's being pumped underground at eighty-five dollars.
Manure?
Ton. So just keep that in mind. I haven't had a lot of time to research on this, but we better be ready for it. I mean, it seems like right now, uh, the game is pollute the underground. But I mean, this is what is. But I mean, this is what it's coming to. Now it's ammonia, methane. And so you cannot buy manure from some of them feet lots down there. They got slurry pumping, same as Summit. So you might want to kind of be aware of that.
That's interesting. Thanks for that information.
Anything for credit.
Yeah. Okay, anything else for the benefit of Burley County? Seeing none, we are adjourned.